All right, it looks like everybody's joined in, so we'll get this meeting started. I'm gonna forego the pledge in a moment of silence when we'll call. Trustee Ted Webb here. Vice Chairman Trustee Frank Park.
Here.
Trustee Bob McFarland.
Yeah.
Fiscal Officer Chris Chapman.
Chief here.
Yes, okay. All right. This meeting is being conducted in teleconference following the current guidelines defined by State of Ohio Open Meetings Law and in accordance under recommendations of Legal Counsel and Governor Dewan. There will be no public comments at the end of this meeting. This meeting is being audio recorded for information purposes and will be posted on the website. 134-20, accepting the minutes from the July 14th meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Don't have any copies of correspondence? If there is any, it certainly would be available by request. Administration, can you report, gentlemen?
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
I do not have nothing to report.
I will be teleconferencing or having a Zoom meeting with the Board of Directors of COG tomorrow night. Hopefully I'll have something to report at our next meeting. Okay. 135-20, authorizing fiscal officer to pay all outstanding invoices and approve all warrants incurred from August 12th to September 8th, 2020. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Trustee Webb, yes. 136-20, resolution to start the bid process for the storage building at the Hillside Cemetery. Make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Trustee Webb, yes. Is there any comments on that?
Yeah. I'm going, I've talked to Mark Finlemore. I gotta get Robin to pull out, or maybe Cindy, pull out all the material that we have. So maybe Bob and I can look it over and see where we're at.
Now, this will be the information that was drawn up and did on with the whole scope of the project. All we're gonna do is pull out the building part of it.
Right, right.
Okay. Will there be any changes on that? I know Bob had mentioned something about possibly making it a block building instead of a wood building.
Well, it was a block building to begin with. That's, you know, I don't know. We're gonna, that's why I say we gotta look at it and determine at that point.
Okay. Now, Mark will have to draw up new paperwork?
What's that?
Mark will have to draw up a new bid packet?
I don't think so. I don't know. That's why we gotta look this thing over and see where we're at.
Okay. All right, any timeline on that?
No, not at this time. I think what we have to do is sit down and see where our paperwork is. I sat down with Cindy, I know where we're at for financing. I think we're just pretty much ready to start turning some wheels here, I hope.
Okay, so it'll be, I think, if I remember how it went last time, we had to advertise it three times? Two times, three times? Something like?
It's two or three times.
Each time 10 days apart. And then we put it out for bid, and then I believe we wait first for the bids to come in so we can open and review them.
Right.
We're probably a good 60 days out from today. At the earliest, be able to see exactly where we're at. I'd certainly like to get this thing underway before winter.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I don't really think it's gonna fly that fast. Everybody's busy, no matter who you call for what. And I, to be real honest, I don't think it's, we'll have to see what happens, but I wouldn't expect to break ground until almost spring with what everybody's out there is busy. You can't even get people to give bids.
Oh, okay, so we might be up against that?
I mean, we'll just have to take, we'll just have to see. It is what it is, but, you know, hope for the best, but, right. And we'll have to go from there because everybody is, you know, booking weeks, months out.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure how that was going, but we'll just have, like you said, we'll just have to see how it goes and how many bids we get and whether it comes in on a number that we can afford.
Well, we'll play it by ear. I did not realize, but Frank said that this was a block building before, and I would not, you know, I would feel we just replace with what it was and a block building and move from there on it. But like you said, I said, there's, we'll have to see what, where the builders are at, whoever bids on it, and go from there.
All right, guys, preach your input on that. We'll go to the next resolution. Resolution 137-20, to approve the attached extension agreement with Wilson Phillips and again, EPAs. And then is a motion? I believe those are the office that is going to be doing our audits for the next couple of years.
Right.
So there was an extension agreement attached to the agenda for tonight. And they've been doing it the last several years, so it kind of makes sense that we continue with the same agency so that there's not a retraining period, I guess. So, a motion to accept them?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Trustee Webb, yes. 138-20, resolution to authorize the fiscal officer to make the following transfer as listed below. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll make the second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yes.
Trustee Webb, yes. 139-20, resolution to authorize fiscal officer to revise the 2020 Certificate of Estimated Resources as follows for the local government funds that were not estimated using State of Ohio estimated and submitted and submit to the Trumbull County Auditor as shown below. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yes.
Trustee Webb, yes. Fire Department Chief Lewis, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. July monthly report for the fire departments attached to the agenda. We basically ran 120 calls for the month, which were extremely busy, 71 of them being EMS. I have four items on the agenda for tonight. One, the first motion is to accept the grant that we received from Assistant Firefighter Grant for $41,000, and it will be purchased hydraulic equipment. Yes, it was reduced from 47 down to 41, but the preliminary quotes I'm getting, it appears that we will be able to get everything we requested. It may cost us maybe additional $800 to $1,000, but I think that's pretty good to get $42,000 worth of equipment for, you know, $3,000. So that, all this resolution tonight of accepting the grant, I will bring quotes to probably September's meeting to defer the purchase of that equipment. The next resolution is to buy six bulletproof vests for our EMS personnel, our firefighters. I want to point out that this will not use any taxpayer dollars. We had a $1,500 donation, and the remaining EMS grant, which is 100% reimbursable, will pay for it. So we will have no money out of pocket to taxpayers. My next resolution is an expenditure for radio headsets. With the new radio portables that we have, the headsets do not work, or I'd have to buy three additional portables to make this work, which would be about $9,000 just in portables. So these new headsets go off of the mobile radio in the truck. This is, again, the most, least expensive way that I can get good communications for the pump panel on the fire truck and on the ladder truck pump panel, and where they operate the ladder from, so they can communicate. My last thing would be, I'm asking to have an approval of an expenditure of $2,286.25. This is a group purchase between Holland, Portland, and Champion Fire Departments for a fit tester. With N95s, they have to be fit tested, and right now that would cost us $28 per firefighter. And every year I have to do my SCBA mask, and that would cost $28. So over a 10-year period, we would hands down pay for this fit tester. And with the split of four fire departments, at $2,000, $2,300 is a great, great purchase, and we'll just share it before us. And Trustee Webb, that does not mean that I still write the grant for the other two or three that we would go for for a regional project. I do have one other announcement that's not on the agenda, and I may be asking for a special meeting next week or the week after. I did write another grant for the county, the Trumbull County, and 27 fire departments were awarded $124,000 of federal money with a $12,000 match for PPE. So 27 fire departments will be receiving P100 masks for their firefighters and reusable gowns for firefighters, so we don't have to deal with disposable gowns and shortages in the future. So that purchase, that why I'm gonna ask for a special meeting is I'd like to get that as quick as possible, and I will have to go to bid for the gowns, because the gowns will be in excess of $90,000 for the county. So we will definitely have to go on bid. The mask, probably, if I have the special meeting and the quote, we will be able to order the same day as the special meeting. And then I have MOUs for the 27 fire departments to reimburse us the 10%. We have to pay it out initially, and then they reimburse us the 10% of the equipment they use. So that will be a request probably for next week, or by the end of this week, for a special meeting when I get more details. And the press release probably will go out by Friday on the grant received by the, we were the host department because I wrote the grant, but 27 fire departments benefited from it. And that's all I have tonight, sir.
Okay, very good. Congratulations on your grant, Dennis. Keep up the good work. So any questions for the chief?
I have one question for the chief.
Yes, sir.
On the three wireless headsets, do you use all three of them, say, when we do go out on calls?
Yep.
Or they like?
No, two will be on one truck and one will be on another truck.
Because what I was just, when I was reading, I was wondering, is three gonna be enough? Should you have like maybe one more for backup if one goes down? Should we have a fourth one? If you had to set one in to be repaired, or is it a pretty quick turnover if they need repaired?
It's pretty quick turnover. Usually he has one in stock, so we don't really have to do that. The bulk of the equipment is, they're David Clarks. We've never had, we've had one little breakdown with the ones that are hardwired. These ones are the wireless, so they can walk basically 1,600 feet away from any fire apparatus and still have communications, radio, and they, but it's more for the pump operators and the ladder operator. The reason is the trucks are so loud and they can't hear, so it's hearing protection, and they got, you know, radio communication in the headset. And I appreciate that, Bob, for offering the fourth one, I do, but I don't think we need to spend the money at this time, sir.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we were covered. I didn't want to worry about spending another $2,300 bucks over, you know, if one goes down and we're short one. But if you're saying they're pretty quick to replace, then I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure we're covered.
I appreciate it, thank you.
One quick question for you, Dennis, and my earlier conversations with you. Is it possible to use the CARES Act to pay for the headsets?
I will investigate that. I would like not to answer that officially at this time.
Yeah, if you could research that, that might help us with the purchase and certainly be able to keep our guys safe during some of these situations.
Yes, sir, I just don't want to give you a yes or no and be wrong, that's all.
Okay, well, if you can research it and report back to us on a later date, that'd be great.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else for the chief? All right, Resolution 140-20, resolution to accept the Department of Homeland Security for our application for financial assistance submitted under fiscal year FY 2019, assistance to firefighters grant with the amount of $39,047.62. As a condition of this award, we are required to contribute a cost match of 5%, $1,952.38 of non-federal funds for a total expenditure of $41,000. See attached award notification. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Trustee Webb, yes. 141-20, resolution to approve an expenditure of $2,469.62 with Spartan Armor Systems, six Spartan Armor Systems bulletproof vests. See quote attached, special note. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yes.
Trustee Webb, yes. 142-20, resolution to approve an expenditure of $6,695 with Hudson Communications LLC for purchase and installation of three wireless headsets. See quote attached and special note below. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Trustee Webb, yes. 143-20, resolution to approve an expenditure of $2,286.25 of COVID, for the purchase with Holland, Portland.
Yeah, I can't hear a word. Somebody else is in there talking.
Ah, great thought. Are we okay?
You are now, I didn't hear nothing either.
Okay, all right, I'll try it again. 143-20, resolution to approve an expenditure of $2,286.25 of COVID CARES money for the joint purchase with Holland, Portland, Champion Fire Departments of a fit tester. Email was sent to the trustees, and see the special note below. A motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Trustee McBride?
Yes.
Trustee Park?
Yeah.
Webb, yes.
Thank you all.
Be welcome, Steve, yeah.
Police Department, Sergeant Abbott, anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that we have is the monthly report that's attached. We don't have any, anything else to report.
All right, Road Department Superintendent Park?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have on the agenda for this evening is just a discussion on the possibility of putting out Willshire Drive and part of Ivy Hill Lane for our Issue One project. The only, the only thing I have a problem with is I already have the Fallon Drive project that's coming out of the Road Department that's gonna be in the neighborhood of $53,000. I'm gonna be paying on Fallon Drive, because that's a loan for 16, 20 years. I can't remember right now. And I'm also still paying on Durst Clegg. There was a little snafu with the COVID gas tax monies, being that there wasn't much gas sold. So I am kind of asking the general fund or you guys to approve some expenditure for our local share out of the general fund, if possible, or something of that nature.
Question for you, Chris. Has the engineering been done on the project about doing?
Well, I, as you know, we put it out for bid last fall, and everything was over the engineering costs. And before I spend money that, you know, neither one of us probably have, I just wanted to not waste their time and kind of get your guys' approval to submit that project. I'm not sure of the, I haven't run the numbers yet, but I don't really have a good engineer's cost at this moment. The last one was about $124,000, but the low bid came in at $137,000.
Right, that's what I remember too.
I would be, I would be, I would be glad to have a resolution to that effect, because here's the thing, you're not gonna get that project probably till late next year, if you get it next year, and it probably won't be done until the following year. So, so we're looking at it probably. Go ahead.
It's a possibility, usually when we issue one project, it falls to the following year, because, but we've already got one on hold, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of wondering if we'll get a good bid and somebody will come out and pay both of them, the one that we already have on hold through issue one, and possibly an additional one. So we, it's possible we could get a little better deal on it.
Right.
And it's possible, being that we're waiting so long for Fallon Drive, that they could just put them together and if it's the same contractor, you know.
Well, well, here's another thing.
It's possible to have it next year, but it may run into the following year.
Right. Well, I, for one, would like to see a resolution come on here to go ahead and proceed, because if we delay, we could be, we could be three to four years behind everybody else in playing catch-up, because we did that a while back. So my advice is to make a resolution that we go ahead and get the engineering and stuff done.
Well, here's, here's my question. Are we gonna attempt to go issue one money on that project?
Are we gonna what, Ted? I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Are we gonna try and get some grant money for that project?
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, that's what I would like to submit as our issue one project.
Well, here would be.
Primary, our priority project.
Here would be my recommendation, and it's just a thought at this point. If we get the issue one monies, and let's say it's a 50-50 split, and it's $140,000, because that is on the hook for 70, issue one grant is on the hook for 70. I think between the two departments, the general fund would fund it for 50%, in other words, $35,000, and the Road Department could do it for $35,000. It's gonna be a squeeze for both departments, but I think it could be a done project.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think Chris's department, because he's going on three different roads right now. Steve?
What would you like to do, Frank?
I'd like to see a resolution go on there that we go ahead and take it, accept it through the general fund. Like I said, I know we'll have money here in a year or so. I think, really, really, if he gets a grant, we're talking like Ted said, $70,000, that's, that's nothing to do that road. I mean, that road needs done. I'll tell you what, if we went, if we went that higher percentage on that, we could almost be guaranteeing them folks that they're gonna get the road paid. Well, we need to do that.
My, I feel that, my personal opinion, then we should move on it.
I think we ought to take a look at some firm numbers on where we're at in the general fund. What I saw, what I saw with Steve's report, yeah, there was a carryover about $600,000 and projected $995,000, but if you look at the total picture, 395 of that 995 is for the day-to-day operations between admin and cemetery, park.
But, but what you're, what you're missing though, Ted, is it's not gonna be this year. It's not gonna come out this year's money at all.
Well, here's the thing though, Frank, by the end of this year, last year or two years ago, we collected $390-some thousand, and we spent $500,000. I don't think that's changing. I think that we're debt, and yeah, it's not coming out of this year's money, may come out of next year's money, but that, that carryover, instead of being $600,000, could be $300,000.
Yeah, I know, I know. Okay, I just, I'm gonna throw this out here. I'm already still paying on two roads by loan, and I have $53,000 coming out of my budget for Fallon Drive. I could probably get some extra points if I went for a loan project, but I just can't, I, we can get a 0% interest loan for as long as the engineer's, he approves it for the useful life. So say that's 15 years, we could, we could have a 0% interest loan for 15 years, but we should still put some local money towards it.
Well, I'm all for that.
In other words, if we were to say we would go, like my example, $40,000 local money, 70, and we say, okay, we're gonna put $70,000 local money, but we're gonna find that, finance that for 15 years with 0%. Does that fly? Is that something that we can do, or?
That, that's feasible. I would, I would really, I'm paying on Durst Clegg since 1999 or something like that, and I'll pay it off in 2023. So.
Would we under that zero interest thing, okay?
Yeah, we can do a zero interest. We're still gonna have to put some local share towards it, Ted, that, that's just, that's just the best points route we can go.
If we put.
So I'm saying like, put $30,000 on it and then finance the other 35 for 15 years.
That would be.
For 0%.
I mean, that would, that would make sense. I mean, that was, that was my next thought. We put a, you know, we put a down payment on it and finance the balance, you know, down payment of 35 and finance 35.
Right, and then you'd have like a $2,000 payment for 15 years.
And that would be $1,000 in, at the beginning of the year and $1,000 in the middle of the year.
When do you have to go for issue one, Chris? When, when do you have to go for, uh, issue one, Chris?
Um, I don't have that paper in front of me, but I, I think it was around October fifth or something like that.
Okay, uh, do you want to make a, a, uh, resolution, Chairman?
I, I think a resolution should come from the Road Department, um, since he's the one that is asked. Uh, make a resolution to the state or, or however he wants to do it, state issue money for, um, for the project. And you understand.
Something, Ted, you're breaking up. I can't, I get maybe every third or fourth word.
Some, not muted, they're chomping in on them. Okay, um, my thought, Chris, is if you could present a resolution for review and for us to take action on in our, uh, September meeting. Uh, maybe, um, that we, uh, fund the project through the general fund with a fifty percent deposit and the balance of the fifty percent, uh, being financed through a zero percent interest or something of that nature pending, uh, engineering and bid process.
Yes, sir. I, I can pretty much, I can pretty much have that out for you. Um, I'm not going to know. I'm kind of dependent on the, uh, the engineer's office for the estimate. They've already got the preliminary engineering done and there's some, uh, there's some, uh, drainage issues there that they're going to take care of, which is also going to help our project because that increases the useful life and we might be able to get a zero percent interest loan over twenty years. So, I mean, either way, we're going to save a little money, but I can definitely have that resolution, um, probably for you before the next meeting.
Okay. Send it out for all the trustees for review prior to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, Chris, when, when you get that, Chris, I'd call and I'd like to come in and reveal it with you.
Yes, sir. I appreciate your, uh, all, all the thoughts and the, I know now's not the time to ask for money. Uh, you know, I, we're just getting so far behind on these bad roads. We, we've got to, we've got to do something, you know. And inactive government is just, you know, just, we, we got to show people that, what we're trying to do, you know.
Well, my concerns, Chris, is because of this virus, Governor has already told township village schools to be prepared for a twenty to twenty-five percent cut in income from the state. And, you know, we were looking forward to a blessing gasoline tax. And it looks like that's going to be not as lucrative as what we thought, at least for this year.
Um.
Right.
There's a couple of issues up on that horizon that we're not sure how it's going to happen. I mean, we, we could end up coming out of this well. I, I don't, I don't think any of the departments have suffered too greatly as far as financial losses because of, uh, a gross amount of expenditure to try and cover for the virus. I, I think all of the departments are paying pretty well.
Yeah, I know my guys and, and myself, we donate most of the products we use there, so.
Well, and you, Department Head, uh, we just received a check last week. I was notified by the fiscal officer, uh, for seventy-nine thousand dollars in change of, for the CARES Act. And the way that works is everything that we do to help with the CARES Act falls under that category of the CARES Act, we get reimbursed or, or we get, you know, reimbursed. If we don't use it, it goes back to the federal government. I'd hate to leave twenty or thirty thousand dollars on the table when we could have certainly used it for something else.
Right, right.
So if.
Now, this was when you couldn't get anything, you know. I mean, me and, me and the guys, we kind of just had extras at home and we just brought it in. So, I mean, nobody else could get anything. So you got to protect yourselves, you know, sometimes.
Well, and, and the thing here, see the Department Heads, um, I'd like you to take a very serious look and be creative um, as to how we think we can spend that money. Um, you saw in Dennis's resolution tonight, we're going to be one-fourth partnership in the Fit Mask. Um, and we want to throw a money, that's twenty-three hundred dollars that we don't have to come out of his budget.
Correct.
So think about those kind of things, um, as to, I, I don't know, what, what could, what could we use? And if you guys need some help, Dennis has been researching this quite heavily. So a lot of few things, buy them and bounce them all to Dennis. And maybe, maybe that will help us in the departments to spend ten or twelve or fifteen thousand dollars, not, not fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
All right, uh.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you for your consideration and your time on this matter. I appreciate it.
Your report. Planning Director, Zoning Inspector and Co. Enforcement Officer, Mr. Pizzullo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll make it quick. For the month of July, I had, uh, seven permits issued, actually six in the month and one amendment to a previous permit, five hundred and forty-seven dollars was billed or collected and turned over to the fiscal officer. I have several, uh, nuisance complaints that I'm waiting for return, either phone calls or responses to the letters before asking for resolutions to have them deemed as, uh, nuisances. That will happen until probably the next month's meeting. Um, since I have to give them the thirty days to respond. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your report. Uh, Zoning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, all meetings from the Zoning Commission and the Board of Appeals have been canceled due to the COVID virus. Um, we will kind of, uh, keep, uh, keep monitoring when we can open up those commissions and, um, appeals boards. Uh, right now, the, the buildings are going to remain closed. Uh, there has been some questions from some residents, when we might open the board, uh, the buildings up. At the recommendation of Chief Lewis, at this particular point in time, we're going to stay status quo. So, um, Parks and Recreation Board, uh, Park will continue to be closed indefinitely until further notice. I just saw today where Oak Creek Park is now officially closed. Um, so we're, we're not the only park in town that's closed. There's, there's people starting to close up again. So, um, one four four dash two zero, resolution to cancel the August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty meeting. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Rusty McBride?
Yes.
Rusty Park?
Yes.
Rusty Webb, yes. Again, this was a closed meeting as far as public comment. So I have a motion at one forty-five dash twenty to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-eight.
Well, Mr. Trustee, I have a question.
Sure.
I, I brought this up before to you and, uh, Frank. I'd like to see about, uh, whether it's Robin or Cindy, I'd like to see about getting the credit cards for the fire chief, the police chief and the road department that they have their own. And they, and we, whether we, we want to do this, I, I want to look at doing this, that the chief has his card. If he has emergency spending he needs, so he doesn't have to use his own. And I, I, I talked to the chief about this months ago and told him I would, uh, work on getting this and, um, I, I want to see this, uh, pass through where they can be responsible with the card. I don't see a reason they can't.
Um, I don't, I don't have issue with that, Rusty McBride. I, I feel that it would be the fiscal officer's responsibility since, uh, she pays the bills to create some sort of a protocol on how those cards are handled and what needs to be done with them. Uh, in the past, receipts were not turned in in a timely fashion, so the cards were not paid in a timely fashion. And we incurred substantial late charges and interest fees. So I think that first of all, to step on board here and, uh, I don't have a problem with getting the credit, but I think he needs to set the guidelines as to how those, how those, how they're going to be used and, and, and what's going to be required from the Department Head.
Okay, because I, I, I really, I think it's pretty simple that they're given a card, whether we put, uh, uh, on, um, what, uh, policy is that you, if you charge, it gets turned in the same week that you charge, that we have it on hand, so we can, you know, cross-check it when, when the bill does come in. And I, I didn't seem to have a problem. I talked to the three department heads and that that would be not a problem to do. And, uh, you know, we do have new department heads, some since, uh, well, Chris and, uh, uh, police chief. So, uh, I think we should, uh, move forward. I'll talk to Cindy about this more then. I just wanted to make sure I had, uh, you and Frank on board with this and it was okay.
Um, I'm totally for it.
Well, and, and my, my question would be, it probably should be sub-cards on the main account. In other words.
Right.
Not two separate accounts that come in, uh, at different times of the month. Uh, what, what, my, my business account, my, I have a master credit card that is mine, that has a substantial, uh, available balance. Um, and then two of my employees have sub-cards, but when the bill comes in, it's separated on one bill, what I charged, what Judy charged, what Dan charged. And like I said, uh, we could, I think we need to look at that and set maybe limits, uh, so that the credit cards only have maybe a thousand dollar limit or fifteen hundred dollar limit, uh, whatever the, whatever the department is comfortable.
Well, I, Ted, I think, I think, uh, we should up that to like twenty-five hundred because the, the department head can spend a thousand without asking.
Yeah.
And, and I think it needs to be at least twenty-five hundred, maybe three thousand tops.
I, I, I think, Ted, at the same time, is if we see there's abuse of the card, then you would, we would yank the card from whatever department head that is. But I, I don't really, I was thinking two thousand, twenty-five hundred does not sound bad. I mean, I, you know. I'm all for it just that I, I think you got to give them the responsibility and I, I, I trust them that they'll do right. They're all the time trying to frown with their money they use or they're being very frugal with their money. So I have no reason to, to think any other way.
And I mean, again, if you, if you look at the big picture, as they spend money on their card, they're going to accumulate points. Now, do they only get the points that they have from their card or are they getting points from the national, the major card, the, the parent card?
Well, I talked to Cindy about that and I think, like you said, we would have one main card and then the three department heads would, it would show that it, that what department spent and the points would go basically to the main card where we could, we, there's no reason why we cannot, uh, if we got bonus points from there, we could use that money for the township because you can either turn it into cash or, or buy something for the township. It wouldn't go, say, per se, to just the fire department or just the police department.
Right. Can, can I say something real quick?
Sure.
Um.
If there are cards and they get points and stuff, and the fire department gets points and the police department gets points and I get points for the road department, that should all go onto the main card and just buy office supplies, like a bunch of paper, like we did the last time with the points that we had. And then we get.
Agree, Chris.
Right. That, that's just what I, I basically, that's just what I said, the points may be disused or not going to be just, no matter who got the most points, we're just going to use them for the township. And if that's for office stuff, then that's fine.
All right.
I, I don't think anybody will have a problem with that.
Get Cindy to write up and at the next meeting, have a resolution on for the trustees to approve the issuance of Department Head's credit cards. Uh, we can get that in the works. So, uh, we've got to call them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Start us off in one minute. So, uh, one forty-five dash twenty to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-four.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Rusty McBride?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, everyone, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.